I'd like to call the order. This Monday, March 11th, 2024 Regular School Board Meeting. We want to welcome everyone here tonight. Thank you for coming out. We have some awards to be able to give out to some outstanding students tonight. And it's good to see so many familiar faces in this incredible school here at Montevideo Middle School. At this time, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the February... Oh, no, that's not that.
That's all right.
That's the wrong agenda, isn't it?
I move to approve March 11th, 2024 Agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Burgolino. Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say yes. Yes. Motion passes 5-0. At this time, we will have a moment of silence if you'd like to join us. Thank you so much. At this time, if you can, will you rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First thing on our agenda tonight is to recognize our Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Counts. And I wanted to go over this because it's important, because I don't think a lot of people really understand why we do this. But the Virginia Code in 22.1-208.01 is character education required in public schools. And it gives the authority to school boards to make sure it's ran in our schools. And so I just want to go over these attributes in Character Counts. It says, "The basic character traits taught by or taught may include: One, trustworthiness, including honesty, integrity, reliability, and loyalty. Two, respect, including the precepts of the golden rule, tolerance, and courtesy. Three, responsibility, including hard work, economic self-reliance, accountability, diligence, perseverance, and self-control. Fourth, fairness, including justice, consequences of bad behavior, principles of non-discrimination and freedom from prejudice. Five, caring, including kindness, empathy, compassion, consideration, generosity, and charity. And six, citizenship, including patriotism, the Pledge of Allegiance, respect for the American flag, concern for the common good, respect for authority and the law, and community mindness." And so as we go through this tonight, you see our recipients of this award tonight know that they are a mirror of these six pillars that we're pushing in our public schools to make sure that we're teaching them good character. So tonight, I would like to welcome Ms. Baker first up, and she has Montevideo Middle School. There you are. Sorry.
Good evening. On behalf of the staff here at Montevideo Middle School, I'd like to welcome everybody. Special welcome to Chairman Cross, members of our school board. It's great to see some former students here. I'm taking it for government class. And I would like to just say thank you to a couple of people before we get rolling. I'd like to say thank you to our custodians for getting our space ready this evening. I'd also like to say thank you to our student leadership team. Hopefully, you were greeted in the lobby when you entered today by some of our students. So that is a new club that we are working on this year. And I would also like to say thank you to my two Assistant Principals, Mr. Gaines and Mr. Saylor, because I couldn't do this job without them. And they are going to tell us about a couple of our great students.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. If I could have Ms. Lilly Myers come join me up here. Ms. Lilly is one of our 2023-2024 Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Council Award winners. And once she gets up here, I want to read a few words from her teachers. Says, "Lilly is known for her unwavering kindness and compassion towards her peers, always ready with a smile and a helping hand. Her classmates admire her for her integrity and honesty, as she never hesitates to stand up for what is right, even when faced with challenges. Lilly's positive attitude is infectious, brightening the days of those around her. She challenges herself in her academic classes, taking three high school credit courses, while also balancing extracurricular activities such as cross-country and track. Lilly is a natural leader at MMS, and others often look for her to set the example. She embodies the true spirit of empathy and generosity, making her a role model for her classmates and a shining example of excellent character at Montevideo Middle School." Congratulations to Ms. Lilly Myers.
Don't go nowhere yet. Is your mom and dad here tonight? Are they? Would they stand up so we can recognize them? Will you give them a hand tonight? Lilly, I heard a lot of great things that your teachers had to say about you tonight. And one of the things that I recognize is when you doing the right thing, even when it's tough. And so thank you for being such an example to the other students that are here. Mom, Dad, thank you for raising such a wonderful student to share with us here at Montevideo Middle School and here in Rockham County Public Schools. And we have a little lapel pin that we'd like to give you, that you can wear, a certificate for Mom and Dad to frame on the wall when you get home tonight, that they can remember this, and a gift certificate to Klein's Dairy Bar. Okay? Will you give her one more hand? Nice to meet you.
Our second award winner this evening is Joseph Owens. If Joseph could come down. Here's what Joseph's teachers had to say about him. Joseph Owens is a remarkable student whose presence brightens any classroom. Known for his exceptional intelligence, he effortlessly grasps complex concepts and demonstrates a genuine passion for learning. Yet what truly sets Joseph apart is his unwavering friendliness and kindness towards others. He goes out of his way to support his classmates, offering assistance with a warm smile and patient guidance. Driven by self-motivation, Joseph not only excels academically, but also inspires those around him to strive for their best. Passing Joseph in the hallway, you can always be expected to be greeted by him with a smile and a hello, good morning, how are you doing? In him, one finds a rare blend of intellect, empathy, and a generous spirit, making him a cherished member of our Montevideo Middle School community."
Joseph, the same thing with you. I love to hear that you, when you walk down the hallways, you're encouraging others around you, because we don't never know what people are going through, a bad day or what's happening. And for you to just give that smile or that little fist bump or whatever, it means a lot. So thank you for being a wonderful student. Do you have your mom and dad here with you tonight? Will they stand so we can recognize them? Thank you. Joseph, I also have a pin for you. Klein's Dairy Bar certificate there, and a certificate for Mom and Dad to be able to frame and put on the wall and remember this, okay? Thank you so much.
All right. Next, I would like to ask Mrs. Jenny White to come join me at the podium, please. We are blessed here at Montevideo to have a very strong parent support system, but Ms. White has definitely risen to the top recently. She is a huge supporter of our fine arts programs here at Montevideo. The energy, time, and passion that she has contributed cannot be measured. Ms. Marasco, our band director, shares that Mrs. White is the parent she can always count on to help with whatever's needed. When calls for supplies or requests for chaperones are issued, Jenny is the one who immediately delivers and always follows through. This is also Mrs. White's second year volunteering to costume Montevideo's School Musical, which is no small task, I will say. And she is tasked with costuming approximately 30 kids to help them become their characters. So she develops lots of creativity and talent that she shares with us. Both of our most recent directors, Mr. Dively and Ms. Payne, spoke of Ms. White's initiative, generosity, and vision. We cannot thank her enough for the countless hours she puts in to help our kids embrace their characters and shine on stage. Thank you, Mrs. White.
Mrs. White, thank you so much for all that you do. We couldn't do what we do in our public schools without our parent support and volunteer. So thank you so much for what you do. We also have a gift certificate for Klein's from you that is... I believe that's... Is that the gift certificate from Klein's? Where is she at?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. That's the next one. And then a certificate here to remind you. So thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you.
And I will do a shameless plug for our school musical. If you would like to see her creativity in action, we are putting on Little Mermaid Jr., and that will be held the first weekend in April, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So we hope you can come back and see the hard work of our casting crew, because they've been doing a phenomenal job getting ready.
Great. Ms. Martz, will you follow?
All right. Good evening, School Board Chair, Chairman Cross, members of the board, and Dr. Shiflett. We are excited to announce the Character Counts Awards to two Cub Run students, and also to recognize the Cub Run Volunteer of the Year. So first, we will recognize the Character Counts Award students. So Evelyn, would you join me up here, please? So here is what Evelyn's teachers had to say about her. There is no doubt that Evelyn Ortiz Lopez deserves to be honored with the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Counts Award. She models responsibility, kindness, and hard work every day. Evelyn is a positive light in our school community and makes everyone around her feel welcomed and valued. She forms positive relationships with her classmates and is truly a friend to all. In the classroom, she shows tremendous leadership skills, as she is always more than willing to help others without being asked, and she has a positive attitude and has earned the respect of staff and students in our school. We are proud and honored to have Evelyn represent Cub Run and receiving this award tonight.
Evelyn, would you stand down here so everyone can see your pretty face? It's a pleasure to meet you. Is your family with you here tonight?
Yes.
Would they stand? Would you stand up so we can recognize you? Thank you. We have a little lapel pin for you here, a gift certificate to get some ice cream, and then a certificate for Mom and Dad to be able to hang on the wall to remember this, okay? Thank you so much for being a positive light inside of our schools.
Next, we have Andrew. Would you join me, Andrew? Right here. So Andrew Ogahari has shown himself to be a very respectful and caring young man. In the classroom, he is a model student who always puts his best foot forward in his academic work. Whenever he has completed his classwork, he always asks what he can do to help his teacher or to help his classmates, especially if he can tell they need some help. Andrew is a role model to his peers, that they can look up to him academically and socially, and he is trustworthy, responsible, and always sets a good example for others. He genuinely cares about others and strives to have a positive impact in all things. Andrew is very much deserving of this Character Counts Award for his character and integrity inside and outside of school. Congratulations, Andrew.
Andrew, man, would you do me a favor? Would you stand up here so everybody could see you, how you dress tonight? Come on, let's give him another hand tonight. Look at this guy. You look good. I'm gonna come up there with you. Andrew, is your brother, did he win the spelling bee?
Yes.
He is one smart dude, right? Incredible. Man, I'm so glad we got another one. Are you good speller, too?
Yeah.
Are you good as him?
Yeah.
Are you gonna go further than what he's going with?
All right.
You reckon? You're modest, too. We can add that to that. Hey, we have a lapel pin that we want to be able to give you, and a gift certificate to Klein's Dairy Bar, and the certificate to give to your family. Is your family here tonight?
Yes.
Will you stand so we can recognize you as well? Thank you so much. Thank you for being such a light, and I look forward to seeing and hearing the next... Well, until you graduate, all right? All right, buddy. I look forward to seeing that spelling bee, too.
And now here is Ms. King, Cub Run Assistant Principal, to recognize our Volunteer of the Year.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Megan Morris, would you please join me here at the podium? Mrs. Megan Morris prefers to help out behind the scenes and does not like us bringing attention to all she does. But she is so deserving of this honor tonight as Volunteer of the Year for Cub Run Elementary School. She simply comes in, unassumingly so, to just run something to a classroom, and the next thing you know, she is there for many more hours. She has put in countless hours of volunteer time throughout the year. Ms. Morris is an active member of our school PTA, and she played a pivotal role in organizing our playground addition we completed this past summer. Her time and efforts truly do benefit the students and staff in our school. We are truly thankful for all Mrs. Morris does. She simply goes above and beyond to support our students, our staff, our school. On behalf of Cub Run, we truly thank you. Congratulations, Mrs. Morris.
Mrs. Morris, thank you again for all that you do for our schools. Again, we couldn't do what we were able to do for our children in the public schools without our parent support. And so thank you for... This is just a small token of the time and commitment that I know that you've put in here in our schools. But here's a gift certificate to Klein's and a certificate to remind you just how great a parent that you are, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda tonight is our Inspires Award. And this is an opportunity for our community to get involved with letting us know maybe of a teacher that has inspired you, a principal, administrator, someone in the school system that has really went beyond what you thought of or whatever. But this is an opportunity for you to be able to highlight them. So if you're a parent here tonight, and you're like, "Man, I've got a teacher," or maybe you're here and you're like, "I remember my teacher in high school, and she's still teaching," or whatever it may be, that you have the ability to highlight them, and we have the opportunity to see the great things that we're doing in our schools. So tonight, for our first one is going to be Ms. Deanna Deering. Wow, all right. Ms. Deanna Deering will be presenting to Garland Dean, Custodian at Elkton Elementary School.
Wow, there's a lot of you guys here. All right. Mr. Dean has become a staff favorite amongst my daughter and her friends. He is always very kind to them and enjoys joking around with them at lunch. My daughter frequently comes home to tell me funny stories about what Mr. Dean said to them during the day, and she and her friends enjoy challenging him to eat spicy foods at lunchtime. Hence, the basket. He's just a very kind person and a ray of sunshine at Elkton Elementary, and we are very thankful for him.
Mr. Dean, would you come forward so we can see your beautiful face as well? Before y'all leave, we want to make sure we get a picture, okay? Will you give them one more hand? Thank you, Ms. Dean and girls. Thank you so much for that. And thank you, Mr. Dean, for being such a positive light to our children in our schools. Next on our list tonight is parent Lindsay Smoot, and she will be presenting to Katie
All right. I'm gonna try to get through this without getting emotional. Ms. Katie Flannery is hands down one of the best educators I have ever, ever come across. I have a son who entered kindergarten this year. And knowing I am sending him to Katie every day makes things so much easier on my heart. Ms. Flannery inspires me to be a better educator myself. Seeing her spend countless hours creating hands-on learning or making each one of her students a passport so they can fly to another country in their kindergarten chairs confirms to me that my child is getting everything he needs each day. Ms. Flannery has helped my son grow so much, not only in his academics, but also in his confidence in himself. And for that, I could never thank her enough. Ms. Flannery is the true definition of inspiration.
Caitlin, can we get one more picture? Will you stand there? Ms. Flannery, will you renew my passport if I bring it in? Okay. It's getting close. Thank you. Will you give her one more hand tonight? Thank you, Ms. Flannery. That's pretty cool. This is a fun part of our meeting here, you know? There's a lot of stuff that gets heavy at times, but this is a fun time to see the good things that's happening inside of our schools and the students. And this is why we do, as board members, to see the good things that's happening like this. So thank you, guys, so much. Last tonight is Simon Dustin and the students of Ms. Cordell's class, presenting to Emma Cordell, fifth grade teacher at Cub Run Elementary.
Hi, everyone. I'm Simone Dustin Hess. So we have some students coming to join us. But I'll get started, because I actually have a lot to say. Ms. Cordell is an amazing teacher. When we first met her at the very beginning of fourth grade, she was so organized and professional. She clearly communicated expectations to not only students, but also to parents. Throughout the year, she worked so hard to get to know not only students, but also their families. When one student did not have a ride to an early field trip, she coordinated carpooling for that student. And she didn't just ask about students' extracurricular activities, she showed up and cheered at She has empathy towards anxiety-provoking situations, and so with the utmost understanding is able to guide them through their lessons, tests, and social situations. While accepting students where they are at at the moment, she really strives to bring out their very best. On a field trip, I show how she helps students and they help her. There's such a sense of teamwork in that classroom that it feels like family. If one kid's freaking out, they just all seem to rally together to help. For a teacher to be able to connect so deeply with not only individual students, but also so masterfully manage the group dynamic as just a second-year teacher is truly amazing. We're lucky that she looped with this student, so this year, in fifth grade, she met them where they were at at the end of summer, and with energetic, enthusiastic, creative, inspiring energy has made the days fun, and my daughter wants to go to school. Ms. Cordell is one of those teachers that students will remember forever because she not only cares about their academic performance, but also their mental health and emotional well-being. We are lucky... Ms. Cordell is one of those teachers that they'll always remember, as I said. So we really could not have asked for a better role model as these fifth graders prepare to move forward and transition into middle school. So, thank you, Ms. Cordell, and here's your certificate and some flowers.
All right, guys, if y'all can surround Ms. Cordell there so we can get a good picture. Don't be afraid of her. We know you're not. Will you give her one more hand tonight? Thank you, guys, and thank you, our parents that presented here tonight. We really appreciate that. Our Inspire Awards are made possible by the financial support of Reefy and Dupont Community Credit Union. So we wanted to say thank you to those two tonight for sponsoring these events. We're gonna take just a two-minute recess for those who need to leave tonight, and then we'll get into highlights. But thank you so much for those who were able to come.
Mr. Dean. Just for tonight, or do you guys like wearing these to school? You're gonna wear them to school. Thank you so much for coming tonight. I love the shirts. But I saw the shirts as you went away. I'm like, wait a second. I gotta know the story behind it. Thank you guys. I think you did great.
Alright, we'll call it back to order here, and go ahead, Ms. Burgelmann. No, you're fine, you are a rock star, so we'll wait for you. And so, this will send us into our board highlights, and tonight, I'm gonna start with Ms. Burgelmann down on my right-hand side. You ask, you shall receive.
No one can steal my highlights. Hopefully, I won't make this too long because I have a lot. So, in the past couple of weeks, I was able to go to two of our musicals. I just went, I took all of my kids and my husband to The Rock of Ages at J. Frank, and that was awesome. The music was amazing. It was really cool because there were people sitting around me and I, you know, we started talking and they said, "Do you have kids in the show?" And I said, "No," and none of them had kids in the show or knew anybody in the show, so it was really cool to see the community come out and support it, and the music was awesome. It was really hard not to sing with the kids because I knew a lot of the songs, but it was really cool seeing like their costumes and their 80's hair, so it was really cool. They did an awesome job, and they had probably the biggest cast I had seen so far, and all of the kids worked so well together, filling the whole auditorium, so they just, you know, did an amazing job. I went to Spotswood and I saw Anastasia, and I took my daughter with me, and they had little crowns that you could buy when you went in. And she did not take her crown off for like three days, so everywhere she went, she wore the crown, and it was hilarious, and we just let her, and so eventually the crown came off thankfully. But the kids in that musical were so talented. My very favorite part was this train scene, and I don't know if anybody saw it, but they had so many kids working this train, and it was on cue, and it went with like the scenery. It was just really cool to see how they worked together, and that was awesome. So, when we got to Anastasia, we were sitting down, and there were some students from another play, another musical, who were sitting behind us. And I just wanted to highlight like all of the kids who are in all of the musicals. They are so supportive, and they come out to every other school's musical, and they clap the loudest, and they cheer the loudest, and I was just really impressed because as I have been going to all of these musicals, I'm seeing kids from the other musicals, and they're literally at every single musical. So, you know, you guys are just like awesome role models, and you know, the kids here are talking about going to high school. You're really, really good role models for them, coming to their musicals, supporting everybody else. So, I was just really impressed by that. Great examples to your peers and just being supportive of everybody in the community, especially in the, you know, musical community within our schools. The last thing I have was, I had mentioned it at our last meeting, was a fundraiser at Linville Edom Elementary School, which is where my daughter goes and is a 2nd grader there. And it was for a student, Jonathan Hassler, and who's battling cancer right now. And I was so shocked and impressed by the community's support of this fundraiser, like the whole community of Rockingham County. So, you know, kudos to everybody who showed up, who donated, who supported. It was really, really, really an awesome thing to see how many people showed up. We did gather donations Thursday and Friday, and the just cars were coming in and out, dropping things off. They did make, I'm not gonna share the amount because I don't wanna spoil it for them, but I was blown away by how much they were able to raise for this family. So, and I want to shout out the 2nd graders because on Friday, I got there really early, and we helped, you know, set everything out, put everything on the tables for Saturday morning, and both 2nd grade classes were just ready to help organizing things, putting things on the tables, and just hustling to support their friend. The teachers and the staff volunteered so many hours. I saw, I was getting emails 9:00 at night, at 5:00 in the morning, "Hey, here's what we're doing, you know, when you get here." So, they were tirelessly working, and I was just really, really impressed by the staff at Linville and how much they volunteered to help out this family. So, those are my highlights. I was really happy to be able to be a part of that and to be there every day to help them volunteer, and it was really cool. I mean, a lot of board members came to the event, and they had a bake sale, and the community, everyone who donated to the bake sale, that stuff flew out the door within like an hour. So, I was very impressed as well by that. So, thank you to everyone who came and donated, and everyone watching who supported it. It was really, really awesome. So, keep an eye on social media, I assume they'll post the amount that they were able to raise on there, but you'll be shocked. I was really impressed, so that's all.
That's all, that's not just all. I mean, you just stole most of our thunder here tonight, so I appreciate that. If you were in Anastasia or at Spotswood High School, or you helped out in any way, would you, and you're here tonight, would you stand up so we can recognize you? And any parents, do we have any parents that helped out for that show as well? Incredible, incredible show. So, thank you, guys, for all you did. It was, I didn't get a chance to go to TAs, but all the ones I've seen so far, hands down the best that I've seen, so great job, great job. Ms. Cave, you're next.
I thought you were doing yours again. I don't know, why does that always happen to me? We actually got there, we planned to be at that yard sale, bake sale at 8:00, and I think we got there like maybe at 10:00 after, it was a little bit late, so we actually got a lot, we got some of the baked goods before it was out, and I'm glad we got there now. But I will tell you, when I showed up, when we showed up just a few minutes after 8:00, and I think it started 8:00, it was like 8:00 to 12:00, I mean, there were already droves of people leaving, and so it was just well-supported. I almost thought about wearing my blue Team Jonathan shirt tonight, but I didn't know if a t-shirt was appropriate, but anyways. And I don't know if this is appropriate either, but I just want to thank Ms. Deering who put in Mr. Dean's name, the custodian, for the Inspire Award because I think our custodians, they just, they all, I mean, I don't wanna brag on District 5, but we've always just had, I mean, they're the ones that I know, right? So, I mean, we've always had phenomenal custodians ever since I was in school, and I think some of them, I don't know, might even still be there unless they're part-time or maybe just retired, but they're just, they're just good people, good humor, just kind and gentle, love the students, you know, and they make an impression on them, so, and they're often overlooked, so I just, I think she's gone, but I just wanted to thank Ms. Deering for doing that. And we've all had a really busy two weeks, and so I had to make a list tonight. I was able, as I serve on the committee for the governor's school, I was able to go to their board meeting a couple of weeks ago, and that was really interesting, a lot of learning for me, and just learning how many students out of our division get to go to that, and I got to sit with two of the seniors, and they told me all about it and their plans for life, and they're just exceptional people, exceptional students, and I'm proud to say that I'm a part of the, you know, the system that's educating them. So, that was, that was a really good day. It was a rainy day, but it was a good day, good experience. I went to Elkton Middle School, PTO Bingo, and that was, there were so many people there, the whole gym was completely filled, people were sitting on the bleachers, I mean, it just, we love community here, and it was just really great, it was ran well, and we had a super time, and we just, I don't know, my son and I, well, my oldest son and I went, and we must've sat in the lucky corner. Like, I don't ever go, I really go to sort of People Watch and just meet people and all that stuff. That, for me, is fun, like, I like people, so, but I won, my son won, another kid at the table that we were sitting with won, and it was just this whole like favored corner. I don't know, it was so, it was so crazy, but it was just a really good time, and I love, you know, that we're able to come together and raise money for the schools like that, so that was really great. The regional spelling bee, I got to go to, and it's Skyline Middle School, and I'm just, I'm a nerd in that way when it comes to English and math really too, but I love spelling bees, and for me, like, those types of things are really fun. And just to see Mr. Elkhari Little Anthony when he was so excited, and you just can't put in words, I think I might've said something on Facebook about it, but you just can't put into words that kind of excitement when it comes out of, out of a little young man like that. I was just so, just so happy to be there and be a part of it. And I joke with Matt a lot of times, I tell him, we share a lot of District 3 and District 5, so I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take a little bit of credit. No, I'm just kidding, but I love all of Rockingham County, but that was just, it was great to see, I'm excited to see him go on to national, I think he's going to, I mean, I think he's gonna be something else. So, I also got to attend the dyslexia simulation in Broadway, and that's led by Kim Stumpf, that's who I was invited by, and I don't know all the people who run that, but, and I think the way that I understood it is all of our paraprofessionals have now been through that simulation, and that's good to know. For me, it was, it was an increasing knowledge type thing, because I don't think I totally understood exactly what dyslexia is and how it affects, but as I sat there and I learned, I thought about people that, well, kids, and I specifically could go back to 5th grade and even tell you who those kids were, that they were probably struggling with dyslexia, and we just didn't recognize it back then as well as what we do now. And I remember in the simulation, the way that I felt when we were, when we were doing the thing, like, we had to write a paragraph about what we did today, really easy, got three minutes, wrote it down, and then we had another three minutes to write what we did yesterday, but you couldn't use like about 10 words, and they were like pretty commonly used sight words, and you couldn't use certain letters, you had to substitute for another letter, and you couldn't like write the word and then mark out the letter you weren't supposed to use, like, you had to stop and do it as you were writing. And in three minutes, I barely got two lines written, and I was so like frustrated, and they were teaching us that that's how those kids feel with that, you know, lack of language ability. And I could think about kids in 5th grade that probably had that issue, and I remember like the way I felt in the classroom, like not knowing what they were struggling with and going through, so it was just, it was so great for me. I just, I met Ms. Stumpf afterwards, and I just went to her in tears, and I'm like, "Oh, my goodness," because if anything, like, it just, it created empathy in me that I just, I didn't know, you know? And so, I just want to thank her for doing that, and I know that we have many programs in RCPS that deal with learning disabilities and things, but that one was really great for me. I was able to spend half a day at Elkton Middle School this past week, and I just happened to be there on the day that they did the statewide tornado drill, and so that was really interesting, and you know, for the most part, like, I think the kids did really well, and I thank Ms. Holloway for that, but they even had, you know, staff that was out that day, and I was asking, "Well, what if this happened, and you had staff out that day, like, would you still be sitting here organizing while the tornado's on the way or whatever?" And so, they were explaining some things to me, and it's been, thank you so much, Ms. Holloway, and other principals that have just let us come into your schools and learn, and just allow us to work together and just make our schools the best they can be. But, and I also spent probably a little over an hour with Ms. Kida in the library, and I got to see the breakout sessions, which are, which are so cool, and I'm nerd also in that way, like, I like mysteries, and it was like a mystery of putting all these things together and learning English and, you know, nouns and verbs and adjectives, and had a really hard time not like telling them the answers, and I but I, but it was so, it was so interesting, but I was laughing with another girl that was, that was in the library, that we went to Elkton Middle School together, and she was like, you know, there's, she didn't say they're so loud, but she, she was like, you know, "The noise in here is so different than when we were in school," because she's like, "I just remember, I got in trouble for looking at somebody too loud," you know? And it's, and we just laughed, you know, but it was, it was great, all the different things they do in the library now to educate our kids, like, it is so much more than just checking out books, and so that was, that was really interesting, very fun, and if they ever did like a staff breakout session, I would, I would go, I would go. But, and that, I think, is all that I had, I think, but anyway, so, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. It's, you know, in two weeks and doing this, there's always tons of stuff, especially now with all the musicals that we have going on as well, there's just a lot of things that we get a chance to get out and see in the schools, so thank you so much for being involved to the point that you are. And if you're from the east side of the county, it is Live Berry, okay? So, that's how we say it, Live Berry, and Ms. Hurst? Go ahead.
Thank you. One thing I want to highlight is the work that the textbook adoption committee for elementary language arts did over the last month. These teachers and administrators, they take time to meet outside of their school hours, outside of their regular work hours, they do this above and beyond, and I just want to say thank you, because I know that it takes a lot of time to review all of the different curriculums that, you know, we're considering, and to spend a lot of time devoting, a lot of time and energy into that process so that we can make a really good adoption, curriculum adoption selection, so thank you. Their curriculum recommendation is available for parents and students to review at Central Office this week and next, from 8:00 to 4:00, from, let me make sure I get these dates right, March 11th through the 22nd, 8:00 to 4:00, but then there are two evenings on the 12th and the 21st that Central Office will remain open until 7:00 o'clock, for those of you that can't make it during between 8:00 and 4:00. And then, my second highlight is about a Rockingham Academy fundraiser that was hosted by Sunset Drive Church in here, or in Broadway, and they held, had a breakfast fundraiser, had a goodwill offering fundraiser for our school. It was packed, we showed up probably around 8:00 o'clock, it was packed, it was hard to find a place to sit. There were so many people that came out to support the students at Rockingham Academy, and probably about 15 minutes before close or before the end, we were notified that they sold out, they ran out of food, which is a great, sorry for those of you that didn't make it in time, but it was a great problem to have because it meant that the community just was overwhelmingly supporting this school, and I want to say thank you to Sunset Drive Church in Broadway for opening your doors and hosting that for our schools. Those are the kinds of things that, once again, just goes right back to what Rockingham County is all about, and it's about community. That's all I have.
I think it was Pastor Tom, but yeah, thank you to the pastor and to the Sunset Drive allowance to do that. Ms. Lore?
Thank you. I was able to judge actually the KidWinds Solar Project at J. Frank Hilliard over the past two weeks, and that was pretty amazing. We only can allow, I think, three or four teams to go on, and we had like 10 teams participating, and these kids took like little motors and little Legos and all sorts of little tiny lights and built projects, and one team built like a, an amusement park, and then ran the numbers and discovered how much electricity it would take to run King's Dominion with solar. And it was a really cool project, and I really appreciate them letting me participate and help with that. Then also, the musical, I went to both the two musicals in the last two weeks, and one, fun fact, the J. Frank Hilliard musical, they auditioned 110 students, and they were able to take 80 students, so they actually had to cut 20 students, but also, I mean, like, guys, the stage was full, it was phenomenal, and definitely hats off to J. Frank for coordinating that and all of that. And then, also, I want to find out something about Anastasia. I would like the superintendent to find out for me about the big screen that they used and how we can get that at other schools, because that thing was phenomenal. If anybody's, "Oh, oh, I have somebody in the back that knows, find me later and we'll let's talk," because that thing was awesome. I very much enjoyed that at Anastasia.
Please don't give out our secrets.
And then, I've started making the rounds, and I'm helping with Broadway, J. Frank, and Pence do some ag science, FFA Ag Science Fair projects, and in that, I got to see a bunch of kids that are preparing for the parliamentary procedure contest, and yeah, parley as a spectator sport is really awesome, to see these kids to, Chairman, Chairman, and I move, and all the, all the neat things that they do, it's really super cool, and I would totally be like, "Hey, school board, let's go to the contest." The contest is in Holston, which is down near Abington, and our blessed little teams, I think there's at least four teams, and bless them because they're carpooling to Holston on a bus, five and a half hours, one way. So, they're gonna go down on Friday, compete, and then turn around and come home on a school bus. bus. So if we can all say a little prayer that they, that, that they can support each other all the way home after competing against each other. And that they have safe travels and that they can just manage, cause yeah, good luck to them. And those are my highlights. Thank you.
Uh, thank you Chair Cross. I just wanna say, um, thank you to the school board members, um, for being, uh, visible. I try to go to these places as well and I can't get away from you. I'm just kidding. When, when I show up at the spelling bee, there's Mrs. Cave, right? So she and I sit together and we watch. And then I go to the breakfast and there's Mrs. Hurst and Mr. Cross. And then I go to the yard sale, there's Mrs. Burgoyne. Right, so I see you folks out a lot of places, doing things and being visible. So that's awesome. Thank you for doing that, building those relationships with the community. And I just wanna say, um, you know, I don't wanna come out and say which musical was my favorite, because then that could, that could cause hard feelings. And I'm the superintendent for all of Rockingham County Public Schools. But man, uh, the lead at Anastasia was pretty powerful, that young man and young woman, uh, who did a really nice job. And the big screen probably did help, so we'll have to do some investigation about this, the big screen. And I did notice, uh, and I did notice, Mrs. Lore, Katie and I talked about this, how many students were involved with J. Frank Hilliard Musical? That was awesome, that many students involved. That's, that was impressive. And that soundtrack, I mean, that, that soundtrack was pretty, pretty powerful from the eighties, so thank you.
I, I have two and I'll be real quick, but, um, two of my highlights was, uh, number one was Anastasia. And the, my favorite scene was when you guys, uh, did the train scene and how the screen was able to turn with the, when you turn the train, the car, it was really cool. So great job for doing that. And, uh, I, I not only saw it once, but I saw it twice. I brought my daughter back, I, on Sunday, saw it again on Sunday. You guys just did an incredible job. So thank you guys for everything that you, uh, all the time and hard work you put into it, it was just amazing. I'm just phenomenal. So as District Three Representative Chair and Representative here, School Board, amazing job, great, great job for all that you did up there. So will you give them one more hand tonight, because we've talked a lot about them, but thank you. And my second one was at the Hassler fundraiser was, um, I had just blown away by the support. You know, when you, when you see other people, I'm, I'm trying to cry and get emotional thinking about this, but, um, but when you see other people going through things that are as tough as that family's going through, it makes what you're going through seem just very, very, uh, small. And I was just impressed by the community that showed up and, um, the principal, uh, that, um, told the students said, just bring what you can in, whatever, whatever you can. And so, um, when I walked in there and it was a yard sale and I saw, my wife said, you're gonna get something. And when I found out that they were asked to, to just, they were encouraged to give, um, the best they could, to give something that they had. And I saw on the table, these, this little kid's, uh, sneakers that, uh, soccer sneakers, I think, they didn't look like baseball sneakers, cause I'm a baseball guy. But when I saw little, just worn out pair of black, uh, soccer sneakers sitting there, um, with a hole in the inside and just worn out, I thought to myself, um, that kid gave all that he had. He gave it the best that he had. And I, I took the sneakers back to my office, I set them in my office as a reminder that other people's all may look different than yours. And, but when we give our best, when we give our all, it's a community coming together that was able to be able to fund and give that much to this family. It wasn't probably just one donor that came in and gave a large sum, but it was all of us coming together. And that was just a powerful message that was sent to me on, on Saturday. So those are my two highlights. I, moving on to action items tonight. On our list, uh, of action, we have the minutes for the February 26, 2024 meeting. And do I have a, hear a motion tonight, uh, for that?
I move to approve the minutes of the February 26, 2024 meeting as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lore. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes? Yes, all opposed, no? Motion passes, five oh. I'm, next on the agenda tonight is field trips and Dr., oh, I'm sorry, bills and mileage. I apologize, bills and mileage. And Dr. Shiflett, you know, you have that.
Chair Carlson, board members, I recommend approval of the February 2024 bills as presented.
Uh, board members hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lore. Any questions or comments concerning the bills of mileage? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, all opposed, no? Motion passes, five oh. Next on our list tonight is field trips and Dr. Shiflett, I believe you have that for the board.
Uh, yes, sir. Chair Carlson, board members, I have several field trips for your consideration. Broadway High School, the FCC LA State Leadership Conference, April 11th through the 14th, three students, Virginia Beach. Band and choir, March 23rd to 25th, 40 students, Virginia Beach. East Rockingham High School, FCC LA State Leadership Conference, April 11th through the 14th, one student, Virginia Beach. TSA State Leadership Conference, May 2nd through 5th, five students, Hampton, Virginia. Spotswood High School, All-State Choir Event, April 18th through 20th, five students, Richmond, uh, Virginia. Turner Ashby High School, All-State Choir Event, April 18th through the 20th, three students, Richmond, Virginia. And Wilbur S. Penn Smith School, TSA State Leadership Conference, May 2nd through the 5th, 15 students, Hampton, Virginia. And I do recommend approval of these field trips.
Wow, that's quite a bit, but, uh, board members hearing, uh, his recommendation, do, uh, hear a motion to move on that?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the field trips as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Any questions, comments?
I just wanna comment, you said that's a lot. It's so good to have field trips though, cause I remember when we had none. And it, it's nice to see the numbers coming back up, so yay.
Yay, yeah, that was not a negative comment at all. Thank you for, uh, all of the chaperones that we have to take them as well, uh, on these field trips. So, uh, we're excited with the FCC LA and TSA, uh, going on that. Is it TSSA? Sorry. TSA. What's the airport? Is that TSA? So well? Yeah. Now, I know they're different. I know very well they're different when I travel. So, but no, thank you. I, hearing any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Lore. Uh, all those in favor say yes? Yes, all opposed, no? Motion passes, five oh. Uh, next on our list tonight is the real estate textbooks and Mrs. Carrie Gray is here to present. Thank you.
Good evening Chair Cross, School Board, Dr. Shiflett. The Real Estate Textbook Selection Committee was approved by the board in February to select a new textbook for the real estate course. Principles of Real Estate Practice in Virginia, first edition, was selected by the committee to best meet state competencies for the course. It's, if approved, this textbook will be, um, purchased for, as a class set in all four high schools.
Chair Carlson, board members, I recommend the selection of the Principles of Real Estate Practice in Virginia textbook from Performance Programs Company as presented by Carrie Gray, Supervisor of CTE.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Board members hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Burgoyne. Any questions or comments? I just wanna say thank you. Thank you for, uh, having this and presenting this for our students to be able to do. This is pretty cool for them to be able to have the opportunity to get their real estate license. So again, I think I said at the last meeting, we talked about this, but if we do find out that we have students that, um, have took it and they need a ride to go there, please let us know. I mean, uh, last thing I would wanna do is have a student that wants to take the test. And we understood they had to be 18 to take the test as well. But, uh, if they need to go and they don't have a ride, I would hate for them not to be able to take the test, cause they didn't have a ride. So, thank you, Ms. Gray. I'm, so I went to question, comments, uh, any more questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes? Yes, all opposed, no? Motion passes, five oh. And I think, Ms. Gray, you have something else to present to us.
I think so. Um, a proposal for an RCPS Agriculture Land Lab was presented at the February 26th School Board Meeting, um, as information for your review and consideration. It is now being presented for action to ask for a statement of support.
Chair Carlson, board members, I recommend the approval of support for determining the feasibility of a property acquisition that would provide an agriculture land lab as presented by Carrie Gray, Supervisor of CTE.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, hearing the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve support for determining the feasibility of property acquisition that would provide an ag lab as presented by Carrie Gray.
Thank you, Ms. Lore. Did I hear, Ms. Cave, will you second that? Thank you, Ms. Cave. Any questions or comments? I know we were pretty excited as a board to be able to be, uh, going forward with this. And this is a highlight that we've all been talking about and excited about. So I know the community is as well to have this in Rockingham County. So, um, any other questions, comments? None? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes? Yes, all opposed, no? Motion passes, five oh. Thank you, Ms. Gray. Appreciate it. That moves us past our, uh, action items tonight, and that moves us into our information item. And first on the list tonight presenting is going to be, uh, Reeffi Board Chair, Ms. Amanda Knott.
Good evening Chair Cross, Superintendent Shiflett, board members and community members. My name is Amanda Knott. I am the current chairperson for the Rockingham Educational Foundation, also known as Raffi. For those of you who are not familiar with Raffi, we are a 501(c)(3) organization that supports the students, teachers and staff in Rockingham County Public Schools. Now, I'm gonna start with a story, because I suspect my story, at least in regards to Raffi, mirrors a lot of what many of you have, uh, the story of many of you. Started when my husband and I moved to the beautiful Rockingham County in August of 2003. Our two oldest children started, uh, sorry, you can't see pictures that way. Um, so my, our two oldest, um, children started at, at McGackeysville Elementary, just up the road, shortly after we moved here. And I was involved with PTO, PTA, PTSA, all throughout my kids' school careers, uh, in various capacities, member, president, treasurer, I've done just about everything you can do. But during that time, I had not heard of Raffi during that, most of that time, even though the foundation has been around for 30 years now. So perhaps, like many of you, I had no idea that Raffi even existed. In May of 2013, my oldest child received a Raffi scholarship. He was a senior that year. And we attended the, the reception, and it's a really poor picture there, but the, um, the Raffi Scholarship Awards Banquet, we attended that reception and he was awarded his scholarship. And he actually got to meet Mr. Glick, um, whose scholarship he received. So that was really cool. Uh, but despite attending that reception, I still didn't really have an understanding of what Raffi was or what Raffi's purpose was. And I didn't even remember the name of the organization at the time that he received his scholarship. I just knew he got one and we were really, really thankful for it. In the spring of 2018, a friend approached me about, uh, being on the Raffi Board. And I was, of course, didn't know anything about what Raffi was. So she told me more about it. Oh, spring of 2018, that was my, my daughter was getting ready to graduate there from East Rock. But my friend rock it, uh, recommended to me that due to my years of involvement in the school board, we do our, doing PTA and so forth, that maybe I'd just graduate to the next thing. That would be the Raffi, um, Board. And she explained to me what the mission of Raffi was and how the foundation supports all of Rockingham County Public Schools. I discovered at that point, or rediscovered at that point, that Raffi was the organization that gave my son his scholarship. I also learned that Raffi gives, there's a new, another new picture up there, we do innovative learning grants and actions. And this particular one happens to be Riverbend Elementary, what Mud got to do with the five Cs. It was submitted by Kim Maraskin. And, uh, are there any teachers in attendance or, or principals who have received scholarships? Or not scholarships, but grants? Yes, okay. That's right, Ms. Hurst has got, received grants from, from Raffi. Thank you for, so, uh, Raffi scholar, or, uh, grants is one of the things that Raffi does. And, uh, let's see, I've lost my place in my notes here. Oh, Teacher's Supply Depot. Raffi also does the Teacher's Supply Depot that way, and I bet you a lot of people haven't made use of, yeah. So the Teacher's Supply Depot, and I've got a picture here of that too somewhere. Okay, there we go. Uh, it's basically materials that teachers can use for free. They just go in and they can pick out whatever stuff that they need for their classrooms. And so that's, um, how Raffi, one of the other ways that Raffi supports, um, teachers. So after learning about all this information about Raffi, I was intrigued by the thought of continuing to help be involved in Rockingham County Public Schools. So I joined the board in the, um, summer of August, uh, 2018. So that picture's several years old and my hair was quite a bit shorter at that point. Um, but I was involved at the Development Committee, on the, as part of the Executive Committee. And then this past summer, I assumed the role of, of chairperson, um, after Suzie Shomo. And many of you probably are familiar with Suzie. She's been involved in the county schools and Blue Ridge Community College in Jamea for a number of years. And I look, very look, much look forward to serving Rockingham County community in that role as chairperson. I am proud to say, and, uh, some of you in the back may not be able to see all those numbers, but for the 2022, 2023 year, school year, we provided 84 scholarships, which was about $83,000 to the seniors. We doled out 47 innovative learning grants, that was almost $50,000. And we served over 800 teachers and staff through the Teacher's Supply Depot. On average, Raffi collects about $250,000 retail value worth of supplies that our teachers and our staff can use. We also raised over $5,000 at our 2023 annual fundraising benefit. And, um, we use those funds to recognize the hard work of the teachers and the staff. We allowed each school to kind of, we gave them different amounts and then allowed the, the schools came up with various activities to, um, recognize their teachers. So our current school, our Raffi Board, that's just from last fall. Um, right now, we, we have, our executive director is Victoria Landis. And she's supported by Pam Miller, who's the Administrative Assistant, and Lois King, who works in the Teacher's Supply Depot. Additionally, Superintendent Shiflett and Ms. Hurst are current, um, who's the, or CPS liaison to Raffi, um, are de facto board members. The current Raffi Board of Directors is comprised of about 20 people. Their parents, grandparents, current members of, or current, no, they're not going to school currently, but they might have kids in school currently, but they might've been former, um, attendees here at our schools. Or they may just be, uh, interested people from the community who are just passionate about education. Almost half of the school board, uh, I keep saying school board, the Raffi Board, um, our community, or, um, have a role on the executive team, which is really exciting to be able to have that many people involved. And, um, the executive committee kind of guides, guides the direction of the, um, different things that, that Raffi will vote on and takes recommendations to the full board. We have a governance committee in charge of, of policies and financial activities, development committee, plus tasked with planning fundraising events, and then educational resources committee, which oversees the Teacher's Supply Depot, the grants and the, um, awarding of the student scholarships. And I don't think we have any board members here today, but if we have any, please stand. Nope. Okay. All right. And while I have the floor, I also want to recognize Dr. Charlotte McQuicken, who was, um, served as the RCPS School Representative for Raffi since that position was created way back in January 2018. And, uh, she was just instrumental in helping Raffi just have representation on the school board and so forth. So that's, we really appreciate her many years of service, not just to Raffi, but us at RCPS. Okay, well, it doesn't look very good. So our recent upcoming events, we have a, um, our Raffi Annual Event was, was held at the early, or beginning of February. And we raised almost 40, $52,000 at that event to support Raffi's core programs, which is really exciting. This, later this week, we have a Teacher of the Year Celebration, which is invite only. And school board members, you all are more than welcome to attend that event. Please talk to me afterwards, I'll have, tell you where it's at if you haven't already gotten that information. April 17th, Great Community Give, which is through, done through the Community Foundation of Harrisonburg and Rockingham. The Raffi is one of the organizations that is available there. So if you feel like giving money through the Community Foundation, we will happily take it. April 27th, we have a Raffi Golf Classic coming up. We have a golf tournament every year. And May 16th is our Raffi Scholarship Reception, which again is invite only, but school board members, you all are welcome to attend. So that is my story, and, but hopefully, the end of my story is the beginning of you all's story with Raffi and familiarity with Raffi and what we do to help the students and the staff at RCPS schools. I do want to point out that we couldn't do what we do without the support of the school board. So thank you very much for your support. And if you'd like to see more about Raffi, or support us through a donation, or as a sponsor for any of our fundraising events, you can check out the Raffi website. It's raffigivesback.org. And I just want to thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you so much. Can we give Reeffi a hand clap tonight? Reeffi, Raffi. Thank you so much for all you do for our schools. And Ms. Hurst came back with a report at y'all's first meeting and told us all about it. So thank you, guys, for what you do for our schools. Yes. You also run the lemonade stand out the fair, right? All right. So make sure you get your lemonade this August. All right. Next on our list tonight is National Board Certified Teacher, MBCT. Presentation by Mr. Emmett Shaahan and Mr. Owen Longacre. And I see Mr. Longacre and Shaahan. Since I got the mic and it's open, I do want to say thank you to Mr. Shaahan. I'm, as a father, as a dad, that had a child graduate last year. It's from Spotswood High School. I didn't hear too many times when he'd come home and tell me about his teachers unless he got in trouble. But I did hear a lot from you and his class, and he'd come home with a lot of just excited things to talk about that you all discussed in the class. So thank you for being a great teacher for my, for my son personally. So thank you so much. Go ahead, Ms. Longacre.
Yeah, thank you. Chair Cross, members of the school board, and Superintendent Shiflett, thank you for taking the time to meet with us today and allowing us to talk to you about the merits of the National Board Certification process. I want to begin in the summer of 2021, when the United States Department of Education released a report detailing the educational impact that COVID-19 had on students in elementary, secondary, and even higher education. Because their findings unequivocally stated that academic growth had not only stalled, but in many core subjects like math and reading, students were beginning to fall further and further behind pre-pandemic expectations. Certainly, these realities have been found here in Rockingham County as well, as teachers continue to report declining test rates, low reading levels, and at times, a growing student achievement gap compared to prior years. And therefore, our intent in our presentation tonight is to provide to you an unparalleled solution to these challenges that RCPS and other division face, other divisions face. And in doing so, we believe Rockingham County will ensure that we continue to provide the highest quality of education within our classrooms. So to begin, I think it might actually help to understand the context of our situation by first actually going back to 1983, when President Reagan's administration faced a similar crisis as fears about America's deteriorating education system put us at risk of losing our status as a world leader in the midst of the Cold War. In response, the Carnegie Forum on Education convened a task force of policymakers, educators, teachers associations, and business leaders to create what you see in front of you called the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards. Their mission, which continues today, is to maintain high and rigorous standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do, with the understanding that better teachers lead to increased student learning. And as a result, when teachers go through the board's process, they experience some of the best professional development that not only our state, but our country has to provide. And so currently, there are 133,444 teachers who hold National Board Certification across the United States. This represents just over 4% of the teachers in the country. And as a state, Virginia ranks 20th in the country, with about 4.5% of our teachers being National Board Certified. These teachers are not only committed to the highest standards for student learning, but they are also required throughout their career to maintain their certification with constant and continued professional development. For Rockingham County Public Schools currently, only seven out of our 828 full-time teachers hold such certification, which represents less than 1% of our county. There are many factors that can explain this and why numbers might be so low. In some cases, teachers have expressed that they're not willing to pay the upfront cost that certification requires. But other teachers, as we've discussed with them, have expressed that they are not financially motivated by the current stipend that has remained the same since 2002. The realities, though, are also that it is a rigorous process that a teacher must adhere to in order to pass and maintain certification. And these standards are a good thing because they ensure that certification does not become diluted and that a teacher's methods are up-to-date, effective, and proven with data and assessment. The good news, however, though, is that certification is available to all content areas. It's available to all grade levels. But within each discipline, the applicants must exhibit the same four pillars of effective instruction, which you see up here on your screen. To explain it briefly, Computer One, Component One, is a computer-based assessment that requires teachers to demonstrate an understanding of content knowledge as well as pedagogical practices within your specific teaching area. Components Two and Three are evidence-based portfolios, where teachers are required to gather and analyze information about individual student strengths and then design and implement instruction to meet those needs. This includes video recordings of these interactions and written components that demonstrate student growth. Component Four, the final one, requires a teacher to demonstrate evidence of their abilities as an effective and reflective practitioner, as well as how they collaborate with professionals and parents to best need the needs of their students. Component Four is primarily focused on the community aspect, of course, which is something I've heard so much from you all tonight. And when submitted, each portfolio must each individually meet a minimum score and an overall cumulative score to pass for certification. These high requirements do result in only a 41% success rate for teachers that submit their first time and a 71% rate, pass rate for second-time submissions, which would be over several years, of course. And therefore, for teachers that decide to pursue this process, most would sign up in the summertime as they prepare for their school year. They will then spend the fall designing and implementing their portfolio work, as this will take time and careful revisions. And by the spring of that same school year, they submit their portfolios and often sign up to take their content-related assessment at a testing center. The following December, scores are released, and if a teacher has not met the minimum standards, they will have the spring to remake one or more of their portfolios, depending on how their scores came in. But finally, and I think maybe the most important component, is that even when teachers have passed, a crucial element of the board's process is the maintenance of certification. And this is where I truly think board separates itself, is that continual professional development that teachers must maintain to have an active licensure. And in the end, for me, and what the National Board believes, is that every child deserves an accomplished teacher. And the MBCT process is designed to develop, train, and equip educators with those skills so that they can go into our classrooms and positively impact that student learning. And so to better explain how RCPS can support this initiative, I'll hand that over to my colleague, Emmett Shaahan. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen, for that information and introduction. And thank you, Chairman Cross, Vice Chairman Hurst, Superintendent Shiflett, and members of the board for allowing us to come here and identify some targeted solutions that we hope can offer to the school board. As Mr. Longacre earlier noted, we in Rockingham County schools are lagging far behind in both the state and national averages. And we are attributing that National Board Certification, excuse me, National Board Certification averages, and we're attributing that to the diminishing financial incentives for that program. In 2020, if I could push this forward. Thanks. There we go. In 2020, here we go. The average salary for a Rockingham County school teacher was $30,320. It was that same year in 2020 that the Rockingham County School Board approved that $1,500 stipend for teachers who earn National Board Certification. Along with a state stipend of $2,500, this combined $4,000 represented a 13.9% increase above and beyond first-year teacher salaries. That financial incentive and that opportunity certainly caught my attention and helped me begin my 20-year journey as a National Board Certified Teacher. Today's starting salary, as the middle dial shows, is about $51,272. This represents a 69% increase in salaries over the past 20 years. This has been complemented with increases to other stipends. And thank you to promises made and promises met, Mr. Chairman. We've had significant increases to both coaching and advisor stipends as well. But over the course of those same 20 years, the $1,500 stipend that Rockingham County offers has now shrunk to a mere 7.8% starting salary incentive, almost half of what it used to be. Members of the board, Mr. Longacre and I are requesting, on behalf of current and potentially new National Board Certified Teachers, that you increase funding to this stipend by $2,763. That amount would restore the original 13.9% stipend offered back in 2002. To increase, the increase to restore funds is modest, while at the same time is extremely attractive to teachers. For less than a $20,000 increase in the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget, the same $4,262 should again prove to be an unparalleled recruitment tool. Since the National Board Professional Teachers provides, as Mr. Longacre said, up to five years to complete the certification, I don't see any significant budget increases for at least another two to three years to the board and to the overall budget. At the same time, we will be selectively attracting, retaining, and promoting excellence while at the same time addressing that decline in student achievement that Mr. Longacre had put forward. Current National Boards guidelines require teachers to maintain their certification through professional development and reflective practices. Unlike the original certification statistics that were quite low, 99% of renewal candidates who complete their portfolio process maintain their certification status. This astoundingly high renewal rate is not an indicator of ease, but of the complete transformation that the National Board process has on the instructors themselves. Having gone through this recertification in 2013, again in 2023, I can personally attest to the sustainability of the reflective process that the National Boards offers. In order to maintain certification, teachers must, excuse me, teachers must select two professional growth experiences they've gone through and address how each of those professional growths have actually met the unique needs of their learning community. In addition, candidates need to demonstrate how each has expanded their content knowledge or improved upon their pedagogical practices, which in turn increases student achievement in the classroom. Because of the strict parameters set forth in these rigid guidelines, mountains of evidence are collected, tens of hours are spent processing, and score more of hours are spent synthesizing, prioritizing, revising. Simply put, by restricting candidates to a four-page narrative and two evidence pieces per PGE, professional growth is not something candidates attend. Professional growth is something candidates embody. Lastly, by requiring candidates to submit a 10-minute video accompanied by a five-page explanation of the event to which they tape, MBCT Maintenance demands the professional growth chosen by the county translates directly to student learning in the classroom. Members of the board, you cannot reveal what is not there. Over the course of the 100-plus hours I spent on my last service certification, I clearly demonstrated that I took stock in my professional development, implemented best practices, and purposely gauged my growth against the growth of my students. Each nationally certified teacher places student achievement at the forefront of their practices. It is for this reason that we respectfully request an increase to the National Board Certified Teacher Stipend. I thank the board for your consideration and your time this evening.
Board members, before you leave, board members, do you have any questions, comments for Mr. Longacre?
I just had one question. How many, or do we have any teachers who are going through this process for the first time right now?
I'm aware of one in our building who's on year three of that attempt right at the moment. And any others you know?
Only in conversation, persons who have, sorry, persons who are considering signing up, but we weren't able to verify anymore beyond that one.
I have a question about the professional development that's required. Is that on your own time, or is that, how, how does that work out for you?
That's a great question. Rockingham County does a fabulous job of providing professional growth opportunities to each instructor and each, I guess, calling, whether that be English, math, social studies, library science, special education. What the boards are asking is that while we're attending, we are identifying how that professional growth can be exercised in the classroom, and then we have to figure out how we're going to implement that professional growth and link that professional growth directly to student growth in the classroom. So we're not going out and seeking other professional growth opportunities. We're taking the professional growth opportunities that are being already offered us key, implementing in the classroom in the most effective way, which is demonstrating student learning.
Can you share what the cost is to participate?
Yeah. Currently, you have four portfolios. Each costs $475 upfront, as well as a $75 registration fee. So if a candidate passes everything within the first year, it comes under, just under $2,000. However, from our statistics, most candidates take two or three years and have to remake, on average, two of those portfolios. And each time they re-register, or each time they have to remake a portfolio, they would have to pay that same cost again. So that would be an additional $4.75 for a portfolio, or 75 for the registration for the annual year.
Can you share a little bit about what's in the portfolio? Is that personalized to each teacher, or is that something that is kind of a broad National Board standard? These are the outcomes we're looking for. Can you share a little bit about that?
Yes, we can. To answer your question most specifically, there are standards put into place by the National Boards for each curriculum. So high school social studies are different goals than middle school social studies than would be for elementary school social studies. And that goes for each, I'm going to call it academic preparatory facet, whether that be librarians or guidance counselors. So the board puts into place the standards which they must meet. The four common goals are that we're linking students to the community, that we're exercising our professional growth, that we're using reading and writing in the classroom to show student growth, and that we are reaching out and broadening the community as a whole. So four central themes that go along with those standards. And then each individual preparatory, or I guess, facet of education has their own individual goals, all of which have to be met. And that is really where the rigor comes in. The goals are quite substantial, and you're given quite a limited sheet of paper to meet each and every one of those goals. So few words and a lot to process at the same time.
And you, and you shared it's academic, it's student achievement-driven. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We must gather data at different points throughout the year and prove through student achievement that our, our teaching is making an impact on that student learning. And if I could add, I just, with the cost of the portfolios, I only wanted to add that if a teacher signs up in the summertime, even if they would pass on the very first cycle and pay that roughly $2,000, they would not actually receive reimbursement for about two and a half years by the time they achieve certification, and then by the time that check is actually delivered to them the following December. So it's, it's a significant sum to be put out of pocket with the timeline. You wouldn't get anything back for almost two and a half years.
And if I might add to that, the recertification process, I mentioned 2013, 2023. The National Boards have now moved to a five-year recertification cycle, and that cost is $495 plus $75 in registration every five years for the candidates.
How much is that?
$4.95 plus 75 to recertify.
What's the state portion?
The state of Virginia offers a one-time $5,000 stipend, the first year, $2,500 every year thereafter that you maintain your certification status.
Has that been the same since 2002?
Yes, ma'am, it has.
That has not changed at all at the state level?
That has not. Yeah, that was something they debated heavily last year. That bill passed through the Senate almost without objection. It died in the House or the General Assembly. It was brought back up this year, and its fate is still pending.
How many years have y'all, have you, have you had it, been certified?
I certified in December of 2020. I'm actually up for recertification next fall, so I'll be working on that maintenance.
And how many years, Mr. Longacre, you've been a teacher for a while now, so how many?
I'm in my 11th year. So originally, you could not do this until your fifth year. So I waited essentially till that fifth year and then decided to pursue it. I believe current is three years a teacher could begin that process if they choose.
And how, how do you feel it's helped you as a teacher in this?
My goodness. It's just transformed the way I approach. My goodness, it's transformed the way I approach education within the classroom in terms of understanding not only what my students need, but then how I can design instruction to go out and meet that. And I think a big component of the National Boards process is the leadership that it eventually leads to, because once you start reaching, looking for opportunities to help your kids, you start looking outside the confines of your traditional classroom, whether that's your supervisors, your colleagues, community organizations, whatever that might be, and it really begins to expand your understanding of what it is we can do to help students learn.
Mr. Shahan?
Yeah, I'd echo pretty much the same sentiments. My experience has been 20 years in running. I've mentored three teachers in the county, all of which I'm proud to say they were excellent candidates, have passed their certification, Owen being one of them, if you don't mind.
Thanks for pointing that out.
And we talk about, we talk about leadership positions in the county. This has really fostered a lot of cooperation between the two of us, obviously being in the same building and in the same prep, high school social studies, but we've actively engaged with one another. We've linked our youth and government clubs, social studies, honor societies, engaged James Madison University, engaged Eastern Mennonite University, engaged the University of Virginia, that we're reaching out and expanding in these classrooms. And we don't do so because, hey, it'd be a great experience. We do so because we ask the question, what would it be like for a student to have the opportunities to experience these growth opportunities on their own? Those are the types of growths that have taken place. Other Board teachers the county's had have gone on to work in the central office and to be principals in our schools, so the leadership is quite profound, and you're going to find that across the Board, those MBCT teachers are the ones that are leading in your building behind the scenes and are putting forward that academic excellence.
Well, I'm impressed with both of you. I talked about Mr. Shahan and came up, Mr. Longacre, but thank you so much.
I have one more question.
Okay.
You mentioned that it's $2,000 for the initial and then about $570 to re, is that reimbursed, or is that completely out of your pocket?
No, ma'am, that is not reimbursed, that's completely out of our pocket, the candidate's pocket. And if you don't pass the certification, that's money spent and money lost.
Thank you, guys, for coming tonight and presenting this to the Board and giving us a little bit more information, okay? Next on the list tonight is going to, you want to start out, Ms. Hurst, on this, on library materials draft? Or would you like--
Nope, I'll start. Good evening. Tonight, I am sharing with you a draft of the supplementary materials policy. We wanted to write a policy that provides a meaningful process to raise issues and concerns with supplementary materials. This policy has never been about banning books, but we acknowledge that this process didn't explicitly exist for supplementary materials considering, like when we talk about library resources, we didn't have something for this at the division level. So we desired to form a process for supplementary materials that explicitly addressed Rockingham County libraries. In this policy, we have addressed the philosophy and goals for our school libraries, criteria for acquisitions and de-selection, as well as two different processes for challenging library materials, one as it relates to sexually explicit content and one as it relates to other topics. We acknowledge that parents have an essential role in the education of their children and have the fundamental right to guide what their children read, see, and view, and we also acknowledge that our public schools serve a diverse population of students who all have different needs, interests, and backgrounds. Throughout this policy drafting process, we've tried to gather input from a variety of sources. Our librarians have even shared their own schools' policies, which we did take into consideration. Tonight's draft is not intended to be a final draft, it is a draft. So tomorrow, our division is going to share a Google form to gather feedback. It will be sent out through School Messenger to parents, faculty, and staff, and Rockingham County community members can also participate in giving feedback by going to the link which will be provided on the county website. These comments will be collecting all of those comments and that feedback through Monday, March 18th, and at that time, we will review the feedback, make adjustments as necessary or as needed, and then we should have a final draft for action on March 25th at our next school board meeting.
Just want to add, appreciate the work Ms. Hurst and Ms. Cave has done putting this together, and also the Google form that's coming out tomorrow, that's for, as she indicated, for Rockingham County residents or employees. So we're not going to entertain feedback from people in Rockingham County, North Carolina, right, just Rockingham County, Virginia. And so people from outside, if it gets shared, I mean, I get emails probably, you know, pretty frequently from people across the country about banning books, so this is not a forum for, you know, people, what the people in New Jersey think about our library policy. This is for Rockingham County, for our community, and that's the people we'll entertain, and it's not anonymous either, right? We're going to ask people to put their name and, you know, how they are connected to Rockingham County Public Schools, so just so you're aware.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett, for that tonight. Yeah, I've, same way, different emails I got from Penn America, and it says from New York City, and I remember replying back, I'd serve the people of Rockingham County, not New York City, so I'm, for those who are able to do the survey, or those who can and will do the survey, please put your information on there so we can know that you're our constituents here in Rockingham County, because we want what's best for Rockingham County. Next on the information list tonight is going to be policy revisions, and Dr. Shiflett, I believe you have this.
Well, yes, Chair Carlson, Board members, I have two policies for revision, policy GBD/BG, and then policy BG/GBD. One deals with sort of the same topic, board staff communications. One is listed under Section B, School Board Governance and Operations, and one is under Personnel. And we're trying to get some consistent language because it, there seems to be some contradictory language, language as it is with policy KK that talks about school board members visiting schools as part of their role, and, so we just wanted to make sure we had the same language between those three policies. So, no need to alter KK at this time, but we need to fix these two. So, this is for information, look over, if you have questions, we'll, we can discuss it and then bring it back next board meeting for action.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. This has been a, we have a really good working relationship with Dr. Shiflett and able to communicate with him and to our principals, and, you know, one of the things we don't want to do is limit ourselves as Board members to be able to go into the schools when we have opportunities, because we work full-time jobs, we're moms, we're dads, and we have different things going on throughout the day and year. So, there's some times when I get an opportunity to drop my son off here, I'm on the video, and I'm like, oh, I got an extra, you know, 20 minutes or a half hour, I'm going to stop by one of my other schools real quick and just see how they're doing. So, we don't want to limit our ability, or hinder our ability to be able to come in our school and see all the great things that were, that's going on. So, to the teachers and principals here tonight, sorry that we're not able to get out as much as we want to. Believe me, we're doing quite a bit, if you listen to the highlights, and to be able to look at this current Board and see how much, just how much of their personal time that they're taking to serve in this role, it is a lot of time. So I just want to say thank you to all the Board members for the amount of time that you take and that are investing into this role as a school board member. I know it pays a lot of money and that you just, you do it for the money, all right? So, thank you, guys, so much for doing what you do, it means a lot. Next on our list tonight is attendance report.
Yeah, that's information that you'll find in your folder, and if you'll notice, we are sharing that a little differently than we have in years past, where we used to give you a percentage of students who are attended daily. Now we're focusing on the students, the percentage of students that would be considered chronically absent. And reminder, chronically absent if a student misses 10% or more of school day. So, at this point, you can see where we are, there's a comparison on that chart from last year at this time, so you can see that a lot of our schools have made significant progress in trying to make sure that we don't get deemed from the state on students who are chronically absent. And just, just so you know as well, the state doesn't distinguish between absent with a doctor's note, absent I was sick, absent I was this. If you're absent, you're absent. That's how they, that doesn't matter. If you're absent, if you're not in school, you're not in school, so that counts. So, sometimes, sometimes folks fuss-fuss at us a little bit when we're trying to make sure kiddos are coming to school and getting them there, but it's part of our accreditation and accountability. We can't have more than 15% of our students who are chronically absent. So, share that with you, you can see, again, the work that's going on and what's happening there with that information.
Ms. Cave, you also pointed out when you visited Elkton Middle School this past week, something they got going on, right? To help out with attendance? What, yeah. I thought it was interesting.
So I think the way the high, the way I understood it was the high schools, if you have, I'm trying to think what they're called, I think they're not restorative, but, oh, recovery days at the high school level. If you come to a recovery day, which would involve staying after school, coming in the evening, three hours would equal one of your absences back. And so that's the way the high schools use to sort of curve those numbers and restore that learning that was lost during that absence. So they do that at the high schools, but I don't want to call it a pilot project at Elkton Middle, but they're doing it there. And at the middle school level, the students can't really do three hours in the evening, it's a bit much, so they split their time an hour and a half over two different recovery days, and once they do those recovery days, they get that absence back. And they shared with me how it, in specific, had helped some students raise their grades, they had seen a significant increase. So it's not all just about creating numbers that look good, but restoring, recovering that learning loss that they lose when they're not in school, because if you're not there, you can't learn. And so I felt that was really interesting, and I liked, I got to sit with them and sort of learn, and it's a lot of, it's a lot of administrative work and plugging those numbers into Excel and knowing what you're doing and keeping up with the students, and I mean, they were, they were on it, and so, yeah, that was good.
Thank you, I remember--
I like it.
Thanks, I remember you saying, I'll start with that. Last on our information item tonight is our financial review.
Yeah, you'll find the financial review in your pocket, provided by our, Mr. Moyers, Chief Financial Officer, so that's in there for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Moyers, as well. We've been going through the budget process over the last few months, and thank you for the time you've been putting into it and the meetings we've spent, doing the two-by-twos and also coming back with me and Sarah as well, and also meeting with the Board of Supervisors. There's been a lot of, a lot of talk with the budget this year, and we're roughly almost close to $7 million that we wasn't getting from the state this year compared to last year because of, if I get this correct, it's because of our personal property taxes went up, the county raised that, which put us in a different bracket, which caused us to get less back from the state to funding public schools. Is that close? Real estate taxes, sorry. And so, we were $7 million right off the bat behind where we was last year, so that's been interesting seeing how, how we're going to deal with that. And our Board of Supervisor has done a good job working with us, and we have a good relationship with them, and to be able to meet with them and just partner with one another and say, okay, what do we, how can we bridge this gap, right? Because $7 million is a lot of money. And so, there's been a lot of talk this year, just to be transparent with the budget, and this has really been, this is my third budget year going through, and this has really been very insightful and very helpful, and then also to have you, Mr. Moyers, as well, and to also have Dr. Shiflett sitting here and just, we started talking about this before even the new Board members came on, of what was important for us to see in the budget, and one of the things I think we were all in favor for was, we really didn't have our own personal agendas, we just wanted to do what was best for the schools and for our teachers. Class sizes mean a lot to us, how many students are in the classroom, so that's meaning a whole lot to us. We have some issues going on, well, we're redistricting at Cub Run, so there are things there that, we have six, you have six teachers per grade level there, and so that's going to be, look different for next year, right? So, you also have an assistant principal that's leaving and going over to Lacey as well, and so that's different. And so we want to do what's best for our teachers through this whole, and for our students, but we were really looking at, been looking at what's best for our class sizes and for our teachers when it comes to the budget. So we, this has been a Board, really, I can say, that's been advocating very strong when it comes to teachers, and so, and thank you to the Board members for all the work that you've put into this, because it's not just been coming to one meeting and looking at things, it's been several meetings that we've attended, so. Anyone have anything to add there? All right. That will conclude our information items, and we're getting ready to go into our public comments, but we're going to take a three-minute break, allow anyone that needs to go, you can go at this time, but we will resume in three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can go, man. We got this.[1549.65]
You can go, man. We got you.
Um, musical last year was-
Was it there for grief? They wouldn't have for grief. Okay, okay.
I don't know where- That was three minutes in El Salvador. Anywhere I go in El Salvador, we're never on time. Um, anyway, I, I got a chance to meet Anastasia's grandmother, so that was worth that three-minute or four-minute break. So, great job. It was real, I said, what, I'm, I didn't recognize her, but I heard the voice when she started talking. And I'm telling you, she, her and her sister, her sister played Anastasia, and, um, they had an incredible role. So, I'm, I'm guessing mom and dad, you guys probably took a lot of pictures this year of them being together. They're really, really good. Your younger daughter, who's a ninth grader, she's got an incredible voice as well. Both of your daughters can sing. No, they can't sing, they sang. They can sing really, really good. So, amazing. Yeah, they get after you or mom. They get after you or mom. They, they're not gonna admit, they're not gonna say. Anyway, okay. Uh, thank you guys so much. And, um, just again, as we enter into our public comments, um, you'll have three minutes to speak. And when you have 30 seconds left, you'll hear a beep. At the end of that, um, of your time, you'll hear three long beeps. That just lets you know, hey, your time is up. We do ask you to, uh, to follow our character counts pillars. And we understand that a lot of these topics that we talk about, and we talk about books, or we talk about, um, just different issues, especially social issues that are going on in today's, um, world that we're dealing with and we're living through as society, that a lot of people are very heated on so many different topics. But just do your best to, to reflect that character counts and those pillars that we all possess, and that we, we've seen tonight, and our, and our kids, and the rewards that they received as well. So, um, if by chance that you just, there's an emotional outbreak and you can't get control of yourself, I will ask you to, um, your time will be up. And, um, but I hope I don't have to do that tonight. We do want to hear. Uh, this will last for 30 minutes. At the end of that 30 minutes, we will end public comments. Um, we've done that because we have plenty of opportunity throughout the week to talk to our constituents, to people that needed to talk with us by phone, by email, um, plenty of ways you can reach out to us throughout the, the full month. But we also have a lot of student matters that we take care of even after our meetings. And there have been, been plenty of nights that we've been at the schools until midnight, and our administrators, um, they lock up afterwards. And so, we want to, they've been here all day, and we really appreciate all you guys have done. And so, we want to do our best to have our meeting. Having the meeting is very important to us. This is a school board meeting where you get to, where you get to come and see the governance of your local school board and what's going on inside your school board. Uh, and then we're gonna allow 30 minutes of comments. Um, if you go other places, they do different things, but this is the way that we're operating. So, first on our list tonight is, I, it says Sandy Parks, but usually I see Sandra, so I don't know which, I'll just go by Sandy tonight, 'cause that's what it says.
Good evening. Yes, my nickname is Sandy, although in formal writing, I'll use Sandra. Um, I'm a retired librarian. I have 30 years of experience in working with young adults and, uh, middle schoolers. And I'll also point out that I have been a National Board Certified Teacher since 2007, and it is a rigorous process. Um, I am disappointed that you have reduced any public comment on the library policy to a Google form. Um, I've skimmed the policy, which you only made available an hour before this meeting. Now, in this selection policy, you have a lot of lofty words. Um, some, you know, providing a balanced collection, reflecting various points of view, uh, providing materials on a wide range of ability levels, chosen to reflect the various student populations, supporting a variety of learning and teaching styles, supporting leisure reading among students. Lofty words that are counteracted by the section that you then add that eliminates any sexually explicit content regardless of context or literary value. You indicate that any such book should be deselected. A fancy word for banned. Obscenity legally is judged by the purpose of the work, the quality of the book, and whether or not the work as a whole is patently offensive. That is the Miller test as a Supreme Court case. You look at words out of context, and we'll be discarding many books which have the capability to change lives. And you make yourselves in this policy the sole decision-makers. Actually, it looks a lot like you just copied and pasted Hannover's restrictive policy, and you didn't use the input from Rockingham Librarians. Now, I've shared this research, I know, with Sarah. I don't know if you shared it with everybody else, from Gay Ivy, who was a, uh, many educators here know, because she was a reading professor at JMU. She's now down in Greensboro. But she and a colleague have finished a research study, and they examined what happens to teens when they're allowed choice to read freely, including many of the books that you've chosen to ban. Their results show that teens are able to put profanity and sexually explicit content and violence in perspective. And they often see these cautionary tales, uh, these books as cautionary tales that reinforce the same messages that they hear from their parents. Um, and so, I encourage you, if you have not read that study, you need to. Um, kids don't have to read. They've mastered the art of not reading. We know as educators, if they do, they do better in school. Take away anything that's relevant to their lives, and you've told them that reading is not important. You care about test scores, and you'll watch them go down. Now, one of you all celebrated the veto from Governor Yonkin about SB 235. You didn't read closely that said he vetoed it because it's redundant. The law says that, um, the provisions, provisions of this act shall not be construed as requiring or providing for the censoring of books in public elementary and secondary schools. And that is exactly what you're doing.
I used to stop at the very end, but thank you, Ms. Parks, for coming and speaking tonight. Uh, next on our list tonight is Lois Paul.
Thank you, Board, for, uh, coming out and for serving the community. Um, you've exhibited tireless efforts in sticking to the conservative principles that, uh, that you promised the voters in Rockingham County. And when I see the students receiving awards for academic and scholastic achievements or character awards for good citizenship, it drives home the point that the majority of the county is indeed conservative and is appreciative of the Board's decisions. The teachers and the parents are to be commended for going the extra mile and working with the students to help them reach their objectives, whether it's, whether a college degree or a chosen trade. The students of today are the citizens of tomorrow and will shape the community. I do see a contrast between these students and others who, instead of focusing on the positive achievements and contributing to the community at large, aim to cause rifts, disrupt the school day by protesting at the urging of unnamed adults, and insisting that their personal agendas be kept on the front burner. Those who aim to tear apart the fabric of our society, to please themselves and to focus on their own ideologies, don't serve to unite the community. On the contrary, these disruptions occur during scheduled classes. They detract from the quality of educational time paid for both by the parents and the taxpayers of Rockingham County alike. Having, having an opinion is one thing. Forcing others to accept your own personal opinion as solid fact is disingenuous. Thankfully, there are no awards for Victim of the Year or Best Agitator of the Quarter. Thank you again, School Board, for keeping the academic and the character-producing goals first and foremost in our, in our good schools in Rockingham County. God bless you.
Thank you, Ms. Paul, for coming tonight. Next on our list is Rex Fritz.
Good evening, Ms. Jackie. It's, it's nice to see that there's at least one adult here tonight. Um, I just wanted to say I'm really tired of always having to be the bigger man, especially when it comes to grown adults. Um, I mainly wanted to talk about queer students and what it means to be one, since nobody on the Board seems to know. For starters, nobody uses queer to mean strange or weird, so you can take your fake sincerity and shove it. We are not confused, we are not misguided, and we certainly were not indoctrinated, like some people like to claim we are.
Mr. Fritz, just stop his time.
Excuse me?
Mr. Fritz. No, 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 we're not gonna act like that. We just, we just went through a whole character counts.
I am following character counts. Thank you very much, Matthew.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to be respectful and to, to all the board members, and display the character counts that you saw here tonight, 'cause that's what we want. We want to treat you with respect, and we've asked you to do it-
Then do it.
-to do the same way, okay?
I'm treating you with the same respect you can treat other trans students. So-
Well, you-
But, you know, the golden rule, mind you.
You can start his time back.
So, where was I? Oh, right. Um, that's right. So, we are not indoctrinated, like some people like to claim we are. Like, for, for example, I've known I liked boys since I was 10 years old. Um, I had no experience to, I had no exposure to gay people before then, 'cause I have straight parents, and every single TV show, video game, movie, or whatever I watched had straight people on them. And all the, like, every single boy in my class also talked about girls all the time, yet I still turned out gay. So, try explaining that one. Um, let's see here, where am I? Oh, right. Um, I've also been called every single name under the sun, along with being beaten up countless times over, over my identity. And I can assure you that my experiences are not unique. You can try to claim that it doesn't happen and that we're just exaggerating, but to be blunt, you're not just wrong, you're ignorant. What would you, what would any of you know what it's like being queer in our CPS schools? I'm also fairly convinced that the Board is completely unaware of what happens in our schools, considering that their entire election campaigns are based off of a fairy tale parody of what actually happens. Um, more specifically, there's been talk about the apparent undermining of Christian values that's supposedly happening in schools. Um, what exactly is being undermined? Uh, students are allowed to be Christian, and where religious imagery is they please, believe you. I've seen so many crosses on necklaces, it's not even funny. Um, like, majority of our students and teachers are all Christian. Um, I mean, there's a, there's a Bible in our libraries, for crying out loud. What is being undermined? If it's such a big issue that you have to discourage parents from sending their kids to the public schools that you're in charge of, then you surely probably have some sort of evidence to back up your claims, right? Here's my take. Your values aren't being undermined, quite the opposite, actually, but I hope they will be. I hope everything you believe in gets undermined and trampled on and silenced. I want to see your worlds crumble around you while all you can do is watch. And I'm going to enjoy every second of it, because then you'll finally understand what it's like being a queer student in Rockingham County public schools.
Next on our list tonight is Jerry Hurst.
Thank you. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here this evening, to speak to you and the community here. I want to thank you for doing your job, for giving your best, for going to the school plays, all of the events you do. I know you guys are giving because you're not getting paid to do this. So, thank you very, very much. I am a graduate of Turner, Turner Ashby High School, so I'm a product of the local school system. I'm also a taxpayer of Rockingham County, and I love this community. It is a blessed community. I got my 50th high school reunion in the mail today, so I'm an old codger. But I'd like to say, when Gutenberg invented the printing press, 1440 or sometime, you, you dear teachers can help me out there. But anyway, since then, according to AI that I looked up this afternoon, there's been 130 million books printed. Not individual titles, more than that, but different titles. 130 million. There are certainly books that aren't appropriate in our school system. And we need a system to weigh the value. I've hired hundreds of people from this community to work for me. Most of them went through this school system, and I was blessed to have really good, um, hard-working employees. I want to encourage you, keep doing your job. Elections mean something, as President, President Obama said. You are hearing the squeaky wheel, and it's getting a little annoying, because I'm paying for a newspaper that seems to be gaslighting this subject. I don't hear fair and balanced or both sides within our printing press. I'm sorry about that. I wish there was something we could do. I'm considering doing away with my subscription. I have many friends on both sides of a lot of issues, and we can debate and have a good time and still be friends. I wish we could be that here as a community this evening. You know, we say, "One nation, under God," in our pledge of allegiance. And the second commandment is, "Love your neighbors yourself." No one should get beat up for their sexual orientation. That's just wrong. That's just wrong. But there are appropriate and inappropriate books. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Next on our list tonight is Zach Nicholson.
Dr. Shiflett, I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to address a couple of things regarding the book policy. First off, there's nothing extreme about objecting to obscene content. I've heard a lot of comments about how the LGBT community has been mischaracterized. I think everyone here is all against that. But what I've also seen and heard is disparaging remarks about the people against obscene content, from Nazi, fascist, Hitler, Christian nationalists to book burners, all been said. Again, there is nothing extreme about not wanting explicit content being promulgated to minors, and I'm going to ask that the rhetoric needs to stop. We're all here for our kids, that should be our common bond. So, don't mischaracterize or disparage the people against this obscene content. What's extremely disappointing is we've also seen this from division employees. Division employees disparaging those who pay their salaries. That's inexcusable, if you ask me. This is not an LGBTQ issue, it's an issue of decency, decency in our schools and our libraries, so let's focus on that. As a parent, I watch the workshop, and I watch librarians, and I'm not throwing shade here, but I watch librarians struggle with where we draw this line at. Hopefully, with this policy and future, the meetings that y'all had after that, it got better. But what a lot of people don't realize is that in the last decade or so, a lot of authors have begun to write novels that, in the last decades or so, that schools would have deemed inappropriate. And now these books are flooding the market. In fact, young adult novels, unit sales are up 48% since 2018. One thing that helps drive this increase in schools is the schools using reviews like Kirkus and School Librarian Journal that recommend books with strong sexual themes, profanity, to kids as young as 11 years old, oftentimes with rave reviews. As a parent, I'm concerned that we are still using those organizations that have repeatedly recommended these books to students. Every one of these organizations have shifted from what they were decades ago. The School Librarian Association is a branch of the American Library Association. Their goal is to act within the Library Bill of Rights. If you look at that, there are seven items. They all look innocuous, but they have another document called the Interpretation Document to explain what those seven actually mean. The School Librarian Association strongly feels that there should be no attention given to age appropriateness. What does that sound familiar? They also believe that there should be no filter on Internet. Well, unless you want funding. This is the organization you guys want leading librarians. Really? You are failing them. You're failing parents, you're making my job harder, and you're failing students by doing this. And I applaud you guys for at least taking a stab at this policy. I appreciate it. I've been very passionate about this issue. Dr. Shiflett, we've met on this. I really was hoping that librarians could have, and this Board could have drawn a little bit better, closer together on that. But in closing, John, Chapter 12, verse 35 says, "Then Jesus told them, 'You are going to have the light a little while longer. Walk while you have the light before darkness overtakes you. Whoever walks in the dark does not know where they're going." Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson. Next on our list tonight is Jake Gwynn.
Good evening, Chair Cross, members of the Board, and Dr. Shiflett. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a resident of District 5. I have two, soon to be three, children in the school system. In light of the recent criticism directed at this Board, I wanted to point out that this job is often thankless. Having spent the majority of my adult life in public service in one form or another, I know firsthand just how thankless it can be. Regardless of the topic at hand, all too often, those in service to the public only receive feedback on their decisions when someone feels adversely affected by those decisions. Rarely do you hear, at least publicly, about the good that you are doing. After all, it's the hot-button topics that make good news stories and often brings about the strong public criticism I speak of. Else, it's out of sight and it's out of mind. Know this: Nothing you do will appease the masses as a whole. There will always be some that are not pleased by the decisions you make, and frankly, that's one of the best attributes about our country, the right to agree, the right to disagree, and the right to do so publicly, as so many have done in front of this very Board. Be that as it may, when you make decisions at some dislike, take the feedback elicited by those decisions seriously and give it the attention it deserves, but do not allow it to overshadow the overall positive impact and good that you are doing for the community that you serve. The job you have been elected to do isn't easy, and I wouldn't want to do it. All that said, tonight won't be as thankless, because even when it is impossible to be perfect, I offer my thanks for the job that you do every day.
Next on our list tonight is Jeff Bolander.
Thank you, Chairman Cross, Dr. Shiflett, members of the School Board, for this opportunity to speak. I just want to not take a whole lot of my time or your time, just echo the comments, appreciation for what you've done, specifically on the School Board, the school books and the library policy, opportunity for us to review that, provide our comment, and it's just a good feeling to be part of this community and be a part of this process. Again, I thank you for it and look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Bolander. Thank you, Mr. Bolander. Jacob Kay? Sorry, buddy.
Sorry. (laughing). I would like to start off by saying thank you for everyone who came to see Anastasia and support our school. Everyone here who came and supported the schools, you are amazing, and I thank you all for that. And I'd like to say, I love getting to talk to everyone on this School Board, and it's just amazing to get to talk to you and get to know you as people. So, as much as my speech sort of relates to topics that were previously discussed, I will speak anyway. During the 1930s, Germany was at a low point, a depression caused by their loss in World War I and the debt they had to pay back to the winners. Many of this caused a sort of uprising in a sort of liberal point of view in places like Berlin, where there was a lot of sex positivity and homosexuality, frankly, where people were knowing themselves and becoming themselves despite the hardships that they faced in this area. And sex studies were happening, and advancements in sexual science were happening, where people were beginning to know more about their own bodies and like how they worked and how they operated. And this was an amazing time, because technology was advancing in such a way that we could find out the way the body worked and ways to help people feel more comfortable. And for example, the first transgender operation was performed in Berlin in 1930. I'm not sure the exact date, but it was around 1930. But the German Socialist Party found this not to be up to their German standards, and they decided to start their thing happening by banning books and burning them, which that then led to the thing that happened with World War II. And so, I guess that's sort of a cautionary tale to say, think at least a little bit about what type of content you're banning, because I am for the restriction of some content, but I think it can go too far, and I'd say that it is something to tread lightly with and be careful. Also, I'd like to mention Moms for Liberty. It was, has been called extremist before, and it has connections with the Proud Boys, the Three Percenters, QAnon, and other white supremacists and Christian nationalist groups. I mention that because it was, I believe the list was taken from them, and so I'd say that's something you want to be careful when associating with. Thank you.
Jacob, thank you so much, man. Next on the list is Ernest C. Ernest C., what's that? Oh, this. What was the, sorry. Mr. Calhoun, I know who you are, but what was, it was Ernest C., the actor?
That was Ernest T. Bass, probably.
Eric, okay, Ernest T. Bass, all right, sorry.
Who knows?
Go ahead.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight, Board. I appreciate it. Echoing some of the previous people, I could have came up with a two-hour list. Obviously, time is short for all of us. Most important thing that I wanted to convey tonight, again, as a thank you, this Board has made it to where I have a little faith in the Board again, and I appreciate that they're actively working towards what I would hope to see out of a School Board. I believe any two people who agree 100% of the time are either two idiots or two liars, but I think of the main things, we agree. I appreciate you working towards the library cause. I think some people may believe you have more power than you do, as we only impact what is happening in our schools for our children. If people want to so-read something different or watch something different, by all means, you can do that in your own family. I think that we need to err on the side of caution and make our schools a safe place for education and focus on that education. The different opinions, they can happen somewhere else. That's just my opinion on it, and again, I can't say thank you enough for the Board that is currently here. I appreciate all of you all working. I know it took a long time to have the schools in the situation they're in today. I appreciate those who have survived, and I appreciate those who have woke up, and I'm so glad that you're here, and I believe that you all will head the community in the right direction again with our support. If there's any way we can help you, any way I can help you, I'm happy to. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ernest Calhoun. Next on the list is Sandy Emswaller.
Good evening, Chairman Cross, School Board members, and Dr. Shiflett. I want to thank the Board for the excellent job you are doing. The amount of time and effort you put into this job is much appreciated by the majority of the Rockingham County residents. Your respect for parents' rights is very refreshing. I know your hearts and your focus are on all the students, no matter their color, their religion, or their gender. Two School Board meetings ago, a parent spoke of how she helped her child deal with a difficult subject by checking out a book that they could read and discuss together. I applaud her. That is the way God designed life to work. The parents know their children best, and God entrusted the parents with the responsibility to raise their children. The school should be a helper for the parents by teaching the academics. It should be a cooperation between the school and the parents, with the parents' rights coming first. School libraries, for that matter of fact, public libraries, are under no obligation to provide students and residents with every book they desire. The parents, as well as students, can check out books from the public library or purchase books that are not available in the school library. As our duly-elected School Board members, you are charged with making the hard decisions, and I thank you and applaud you for the excellent decisions that you are making. God bless.
Thank you, Ms. Emswaller. Next on our list is Nina Jessup. Next on the list is Terry Smith. Hey, we made it to you.
We did. We did.
I know you was worried about that.
Sure I was. I'm going to make it short and simple and sweet. I just want to thank you all for what you're doing for Rockingham County and your School Board. We finally got a School Board that's representing most of Rockingham County, and just keep up the good work. I know you put a lot of hard work into it. Thank you all for it, and also thank family, because your family has given up a whole lot for y'all for doing what you're doing. And thank you so much, and God bless you all. Keep up a good fight and faith. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and that will end tonight's public comments, and will lead us into our next. Our closing is School Board questions or comments, and I will start, this time, on my left-hand side, and I'll start with Ms. Lohr.
I think a lot of them have cleared out, but do we have any students with us left tonight? Hey, look at all you all. Thank you so much for being here. I hope you've learned something tonight. I hope you are having, oh, I hope you're having a great two weeks, and then spring break is right around the corner, so we're super excited about that, right? But just thank you guys for coming tonight, and I think that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Lohr. Ms. Hurst?
Nothing from me.
Nothing from you tonight?
Nothing.
Are you sure?
Absolutely.
All right. Ms. Cave?
I feel like a recurring theme here tonight has been the word "giving," and I was just sitting here thinking about the child or the person that gave that holy shoe at the fundraiser over the weekend, and you know, they gave what they had, and it's really easy to give out of our abundance, but what's really hard is when you give out of need. And I believe that person gave out of need, and I would say the same thing of all the employees of Rockingham County Public Schools, of our principals, our teachers, our paraproses, our librarians, our custodians, our volunteers, our students even, to some extent, is that you give out of need, because we need to see these students succeed, we need to provide for the continuation of an educated country. And so, that's really what I wanted to say tonight, just because I wanted to thank you all, just thank the teachers and all of our employees. I so very much appreciate what you give of yourself, and I know all the extra hours that you do, it's not really just an eight-to-three job or eight-to-four, that you take your work home with you, your heart goes home with these kids, and so I just wanted to take my time tonight to thank you all for that and thank you for what you give.
Thank you, Mrs. Cave. Mrs. Burgling? You're going to pass? You sure? All right, Dr. Shiflett?
I'll pass, sir.
You're going to pass tonight, too? I just want to say, thank you to Jacob, he's our, there you are, right there. Man, I really appreciate you coming here tonight and saying what you said, and you're someone that we can sit down with, or I'd love to sit down with and just talk, you know, and be able to explain one another and see one another's viewpoints on different issues, and so I appreciate you tonight as a student, showing tonight, just our character counts and just the person that you are. So, again, another kudos, shout-out to you, because not only was you in Anastasia, but you're tonight. Thank you for that, I really do appreciate that. Yeah, I think I'm good to go tonight. I appreciate everyone showing up, and thank you for all the, I'll just echo what a lot of we heard tonight from the public was, thank you for all the work that all of you are putting in. Appreciate Dr. Shiflett. It's been fun working with you, and it's just, it's a great relationship that we have, so thank you all for giving, for all that you do, and I know that, Ms. Lohr, you spend a lot of time with the FFA folk and with everyone. I mean, it's not just the FFA, but you're giving of your land and helping out our kids at MTC and all that you've done there, I really appreciate that as well. So, it's just, we do this out of the kindness of our heart, and we... So, it's just, we do this out of the kindness of our heart, and we love what we do. I think we love our...I don't think, I know, we love our community, so if we didn't love this place where we were raised and where we're raising our own children, then we wouldn't be doing this, I can tell you that. But thank you so much for coming out tonight, and we do have reason to go into closed session, and so, Board Members, do I hear a motion to go into closed session tonight?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation. And A2, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. You've been my second tonight. Thank you so much. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, say yes. Yes? All opposed? No? Motion passes 5-0. We are now in closed session. Thank you for coming out tonight. Be careful going home.